I now call the seven o'clock Arden County Commissioner meeting to order. Call on Mr. Johnson for the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, we just come to you and we just thank you for your goodness and your grace, your goodness that provides for our needs, Father, and your grace which has saved us from our sin. And, Father, we come to you and we have no right to petition you other than by your grace, and we ask you that you would impart to us your wisdom tonight, that we may do the right thing, we may act in a way in accordance with your will, and for the betterment of the folks of this county. We pray your blessing upon the folks of this county in these difficult times, that you would give us wisdom, and that your name would be lifted up, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call on Mr. Mashman for adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I only have one adjustment to the agenda, and that is under administrative matters, item D, which is memo number eight. That is to be deleted from the agenda this evening and will be added at a future meeting. That means that on item E, there's also a change in that the approval of budget amendment will be number 12, number 12 on item E. Those are the adjustments to the agenda I have, Mr. Chair.
Order any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, do I have a vote to, a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's have it. Appointments before the board this evening? Mr. Crosby, if you would come up to the microphone, if you have anything to say?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, in particular, extend an invitation to each of the county commissioners to come to the candlelight vigil. This one is in particular special. It's 10 years, so will be in deep memory of all of the folks that have died at the hands of their caretakers. And, Mr. Mashman, I would especially like to extend a special welcome to you. I know you're retiring, and we would love to have you come to your work over the years, and in particular, a day that I remember you coming up the steps of the SCAN Center is quite memorable to me, to come see us, and I appreciate that. So, thank you for recognizing this.
Thank you. I'm gonna call Ms. Tyson this time.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer the following resolution for the board's consideration. Resolution recognizing the problem of child abuse, whereas the abuse and neglect of children is a family and societal problem of local, state, and national significance, and whereas it is important to recognize that children are abused at the hands of their parents and caregivers, and whereas children are known to have died in North Carolina during 2007 due to abuse or neglect that was inflicted upon them by their parents or caregivers, and whereas it is important to remember the innocent children who died in North Carolina during the year 2007. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Arden County Board of Commissioners calls upon Arden County communities to dedicate Thursday, October 16, 2008, as a day of remembrance for the unknown number of children who have suffered as a direct result of abuse and neglect, and for the innocent children known to have died due to abuse and neglect in North Carolina during the year of 2007. Be it further resolved that the Arden County Board of Commissioners encourages the public to attend a candlelight vigil to be held Thursday, October 16, 2008, 6:30 p.m. at the Presbyterian Church of the Springs located at Highway 2115 and Moose Club Road in Barium Springs, North Carolina, to remember these young victims and to focus on the problem of child abuse, this the seventh day of October 2008. And, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. Any questions regarding the motions? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's have it.
On behalf of Arden County, I'd like to thank you for all the work you've done through the industry to take care of our children and special ones that are abused and neglect. As far as I can remember, you've been working for the children, and we appreciate it and would like to present this resolution.
On behalf of the candlelight committee, I thank you, and I'd like to recognize any eyes who continues to work at the SCAN Center, and to thank you all also for your support, not only at the SCAN Center but for our Department of Social Services. You can be very grateful.
Thanks a lot.
We will now go into public hearings. I will call on Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. We have a request tonight from Brian Fletcher to rezone over 21 acres on Highway 21 South, which is south of Troutman and north of Exit 42, located at the corner of Oswald Amity Road, from RA to GBCD. That's General Business Conditional District. Property, again, is over 21 acres. The proposed use for this property is a mixed-use development with commercial shopping center, grocery store anchor, with other retail uses included in the project. We have a site plan that has been submitted that shows in a little more detail what the applicant would like to do, and they're here tonight to expound a little bit more on what they're proposing. But as you can see, the buildings on the frontage of Oswald Amity and what's called South Main Street on the plan are retail uses with the larger grocery store anchor and more retail uses in the rear of the property. This property was studied a couple of times, once back in 2000 as part of the Exit 42 study, the interchange study that was done by the county with Troutman's input. We designated at that time the property as neighborhood retail. We do feel that this use falls in line with that definition, and the town has gone forward and adopted a land use plan for their entire jurisdiction, which also this plan would comply with that as well. It's surrounded by industrial uses, some residential uses, and going south towards Exit 42, as you know very well, is developing pretty rapidly with retail and other commercial types of uses. We feel from a staff perspective that this is an ideal fit for the area. This is looking at the aerial photograph of the property. This is Oswald Amity and South Main or US 21. So as you can see, a good bit of non-residential development is located in the area, so this will fit in fairly well, and it is at the location of, the intersection of two major This is looking west on Oswald Amity, so this is looking towards 21. This is the property that we're talking about. This is adjacent property owners. The property that we're discussing tonight is further up towards 21, which is that way. This is an existing business in a residential district, if I'm not mistaken, but an existing, legally existing business that is more or less adjacent to this property. This is looking south across Oswald Amity Road at some of the non-residential uses that are located in the area. This is looking across 21, which is looking westward, and also looking west and north towards Troutman. But based on the land use pattern and the compliance with both land use plans, the Exit 42 study, as well as the town's new land use plan, we're recommending in favor of the request, and the planning board also recommended in favor by a vote of nine to zero. And, as I mentioned, the applicant is here. If you have any questions of them, otherwise, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Smith, I just noticed it looked like according to this plan, there's only one access on 21.
That's true. Let me get back to you.
That would be conducive to traffic movement being confined within the parameters of the development.
That's a very good point. Most of the traffic will be brought off of 21. Two access points on Oswald Amity, and these are subject to final DOT approvals, but we've also requested that the developer stub out their interior roads to adjacent property and adjacent properties as well in the event that these do develop.
That was my next question, but as far as the two access points on Oswald Amity, you say those will be, the final determination will be by DOT?
They will. They will. What DOT will look at is, among other things, the spacing of those entrances and visibility as well.
I was just concerned if you got somebody turning off 21 and a number of cars trying to turn left, you could be backed out in that intersection. But they open.
That's first exit off of Oswald Amity.
Okay.
And other exits.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in all his wishes to speak in favor of this request or even against this request? You may do so at this time. If you please come to the mic and state your name, you may do so.
He's a little taller than I am. I'm Vince Watkins with the Watkins Group, and I'm working in partnership with Brian Fletcher on this development.
Again, would you repeat?
Vince Watkins with the Watkins Group. And I just, as you all know, this is kind of an uncertain time in terms of a lot of credit markets and that type of thing. We have, with the assistance of the property owners, the shareholders, have decided to move forward with this development. We're probably, it will be phased, you know, in different times. We would have loved to have done it all at one time, and we're pretty certain we're not going to be able to do that. But it does fit, as said, with the master plan for Arden County in terms of the neighborhood retail. We feel like our commitment is to building a quality center. We've named the project Troutman Gateway Center, and we believe that is the gateway to Troutman. It is our understanding in talking with the town of Troutman that this will be the only, from our center into the town of Troutman, this will be the only retail that they will permit. They want to avoid some of the, I won't say mistakes, but some of the things that have happened at Exit 36, and to provide an attractive and quality gateway to the town of Troutman.
Any questions?
As far as water retention, the water runoff, that's going to be taken into the Troutman sewer system, so that won't be a problem.
Well, it actually, if you see the little, I can't use the pointer because I'm color blind, I can't see the dots, but if you see the square that's kind of dotted line there, we actually will have two detention ponds that will actually contain the water onsite. And there is sewer to the site, and there is water available to the site, so. And we have already gone through the process of the Troutman Town Council approving annexation in the city to provide water and sewer.
Mr. Martin, I'm working with the Department of Transportation. Would it be a light anywhere close?
Yeah, we've done our traffic study, and we actually have had their comments, and they will, at some point in time, because it is going to be phased development now, it probably will not be a light immediately, but there will be a light required when it's warranted, and it will be at our expense, and all the off-site improvements for D cell and XL lanes and turn lanes will be at our expense.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions from anyone? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in regards to this request? If not, we will close this particular part of public hearing at this time, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion that will rezone this 21.76 acres from residential agricultural zoning district to general business conditional use district.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motions? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Okay. Mr. Smith, next item.
Chairman Norman, I'm not going to say too much about this next item, but I would like to thank you for allowing us to bring this forward to you. The Farmland Preservation Board, as well as some of my staff members, not necessarily including myself, have worked very hard on this project, and I'm going to defer to Jim Dobson, who is the chairman of that board, to give you an overview of some of the things that they've gone through over the years, as well as this farmland protection plan that we're presenting tonight, and I will reserve the ability to come back up and speak.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mrs. Tice, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Robertson, Mr. Williams. For about seven years, we have been working with various aspects of this comprehensive farmland protection plan. You have been most gracious to us in helping us enact phases of it, such as the farmland preservation program, which many people in this audience tonight are participating, the right of purchasing development rights, which is on our books on paper, but we have no funding locally, and we understand that. You've also been most gracious to grant us the enhanced agricultural districts, which is an accelerated form of the preservation district, allowing a farmer to sell up to 25% of his gross farm sales from off-farm or non-farm products and other benefits as well. Agriculture is an ever-changing business. It is essential for our society. It is the greatest employer. It has the most value to our county, state, and national economies. Agriculture is the number-one industry. It affects probably more people than any other industry, both directly and indirectly. Many of the people, there are farmers in here this evening, there are members of their families, there are people from the agribusiness community, folks who are in the business that is very intertwined with virtually every aspect of our society. We would like this to be enacted because we would like to level the playing field for the agriculture community. We would like for our young farmers to be able to take advantage of possible grants which come available. We have not been able to do so up to this time. Many that are available, but we don't have this plan in place. Most government agencies will not honor many of the aspects of this comprehensive plan unless the county government has adopted it and put it in place. This can be done of no extra cost to Arden County. We need no new employees. We're not going to come running for more budget because we can work together. The planning department has really competent, hard-working people, knowledgeable people. The agriculture extension staff is available to provide assistance. Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Smith can work together. Our committees can work together. So, you know, I have a little experience of interdepartmental work and relationships in the past with county government, and it made me feel good to see their willingness to work together. Everyone benefits. But who is the true benefactor in a program like this? A program to give the farmer more opportunity to imbedder himself? The consumer, because every person in this room associated with agriculture knows that they themselves and their fellow farmer has one common goal, and that is to provide the consuming public with a most bountiful, safe, and wholesome product for their consumption, for their fiber, and in the future, some of their energy, replaceable energies. We appreciate the considerations that you have given us, and we ask that you will make that complete by enacting this farmland protection plan and showing these farmers and these young people that you truly support, and offer them an opportunity to imbedder themselves, and let's allow the younger generation to have as good or better opportunity as we have had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Do we have questions? Anyone from the staff? Mr. Dobson, before we go into public hearing, could you introduce who these young people are? I'm not, don't have any information on the group that's back here. Is that the Future Farmers?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chairman Norman, these are FFA members. May I let Vaughn sprinkle introduce them to you?
Okay. Let's sprinkle. Would you come up to the mic?
Chairman Norman, distinguished commissioners, we have a diversified group of kids here tonight. Most of them are officers of the North Arden FFA chapter, but we also have other FFA advisors in the room, and also some retired people also, so we bring a wide range of ages to you. We have our, let me introduce two brand-new agriculture teachers at North Arden. We have Jennifer Peters, stay in, Jennifer, right quick, and Bryant York. We've grown to three agriculture teachers there again, and our programs are growing. We have Mark Payne and some others from Lake Norman I know, and their programs are growing also. Matt Current is our president at North Arden, Shane Campbell, Clinton Beckham, Jacob Miles, Heather Snead, and Dale Baldwin, and these are some of our officers at North Arden. We're invited to come tonight so they could see government in action and to support agriculture. These kids are on farms, some of them want to have jobs in agribusiness, and we're real proud of them, and our county should be. We thank you.
Thank you, sir, and we welcome each of you here tonight. Appreciate you for coming out and supporting farming. At this time, this is a public hearing. I want to open up the floor for anyone else who might want to speak in regards to this Farmland Preservation Act. Anyone wishing to speak, if you come to the mic, just state your name.
Good evening to the Board of Commissioners. My name is Jimmy Gentry. I represent the North Carolina State Grange Organization, as well as the Troutman Grange, both of which are here in Arden County. Our office is based here as well. My organization works very hard on farmland preservation in this state. North Carolina is experiencing a heavy loss of farmland, and in the last several years, North Carolina has been the leading state in the nation in the loss of farm and forest land to development, at approximately 100,000 acres a year. And I am so very pleased that this Board of Commissioners is focusing on farmland protection in this county because it is so greatly needed, and I will simply state that I hope you will support this, I hope you will enact it, and help us to preserve agriculture here in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, at this time, come on up, sir.
Commissioners, I'm David Sides. I'm president of Arden County Farm Bureau, and the Board of Directors of Arden County Farm Bureau have gone on record to supporting this effort to preserve farmland. So we want, as a board, we want to thank the Commissioners for your very positive outlook for agriculture over the past years, and we urge you to take action to protect farmland. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. Anyone else wishing to speak? Let me just say from where I sit, we thank all the farmers for coming out tonight, we thank you for the work you do daily, for the opportunities you give the rest of us, and the food and energies you provide us. I'm going to give any other Commissioner at this time an opportunity to speak before we close this public hearing.
I was going to, I just wanted to thank the Farmland Advisory Board. Talking about a group of people that worked a lot so that this, so that this plan made sense, and it was a comprehensive plan, took a lot of, a lot of time over a long period of time, not just a lot of meetings over a six-month period. This has been going on for, way over a year, you know, multiple years. So, thank you very much for your time and being dedicated public servant. Just wanted to say thanks.
I'd just like to say thank you for your diligence and working on this over the many months it's taken, and this has been, I think Jim said, seven years since we adopted our first farmland preservation program, and I consider it to be one of the highlights of the things we've done in the county. If nothing else, it's brought the farmers and agriculture neighbors together, and we've seen the results of this, of this unity over several years in many different, many different issues that have come up, and it's been a positive influence for the county. And as economic times gets rougher and a lot of our industrial and business base seem to suffer, and I know that farmers are suffering just as well, but you begin to realize the importance of agriculture. importance of agriculture when it comes to putting food on your tables and how, you know, things, as they tend to get, you know, uncertain. That's one thing you can always be assured of, but as long as the farmers out there, we're going to have food to eat. So, I applaud you for what you have, what you have accomplished.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank Mr. Dobson and all of the folks that, that worked on this project to, to bring it to us tonight, and also to our staff that has been working with this group to, to draw up what looks to be a very comprehensive plan, and it's encouraging to see our, our young, young folks out there tonight, too, the FFA club, and we, we will be depending on you in future years to provide our food, so, welcome. We're glad to have you.
I'd like to say that this, this ordinance will certainly allow the farming community access to grants in the future, but I, I think one aspect of this ordinance that has, has not been mentioned this evening is that it will be a justification for land use plans in the future and zoning decisions in the future. I think you can, you can cite several passages in here that if you were going to debate a land use issue or a zoning issue in particular that you could reference back to, as having been established policy this board in support of that argument to support agriculture. It's, it's imponderable to think to what degree it will, but I, I do think that is one aspect of the ordinance that, I'm not going to say underplayed, but probably hasn't been given the credit that it deserves, and I think that will benefit agriculture a great deal in the future in ways that we, we can't imagine. And I want to thank Mr. Smith and Mr. Todd and Mr. Vaughn, Mr. Dobson. I appreciate them enduring my assessment of what I thought of smart growth policy a couple of weeks ago, but absent that tax and the ordinance, I think they took a, a good ordinance and made an outstanding ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Again, the students and the teachers who came out tonight to support this Preservation Act, we appreciate you coming out. We thank you for your time, and this, this is a good thing for Iredale County. And at this time, if there's no one else to speak, I'm going to close this part of the public hearing and call on a motion for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the Iredale County, countywide farmland protection plan.
Okay, Mr. Williams, is there anyone have any questions regarding the motion? No questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. This time I'll call on Mrs. Blumstein.
Thank you. This is the night a public, a public hearing is set for consideration of the North Carolina Department of Commerce's Community Development Block Grant we're applying for, for a project on the West Farm subdivision. This project, the industry itself is currently, there's a possibility of delay for several months, but we're optimistic that that project will come to fruition, and we would like to hear any comments regarding this grant of approximately $563,775. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Blumstein? Do we have anyone in the audience wishing to speak in regards to this grant request? If not, we will close this part of public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve this application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce for a Community Development Block Grant for Economic Development.
Thank you, Ms. Sides. Any questions from board? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it.
Thank you.
Okay. We now move into administrative matters and call on Mr. Mashman. Please, sir.
Mr. Chair, the following administrative matters are considered under consent agenda. Item A, do you want to delay five minutes? Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. Again, under administrative matters, these are consent agenda items. Request from the Troutman Fire Department for approval of a resolution for the construction of Station Number Three at the Bells Crossing Development off of Perth Road, along with the purchase of fire apparatus in the amount up to $2 million. Item B is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number Ten for the transfer of funds from Reserve for Debt Service to the West Iredale Volunteer Fire Department to cover FY-09 debt service. Item C is a request from the, for the approval of Budget Amendment Number Eleven for the transfer of funds from Reserve for Ratings Improvement to the Harmony Volunteer Fire Department to purchase equipment for a new fire truck. Item D was deleted from this agenda. Item E is a request for approval of Budget Amendment Number Twelve for the appropriation of remaining funds in the Gang Violence Prevention Grant awarded the Sheriff's Department. Item F is a request from the Office of Emergency Management for permission to apply for a 2009 Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program. There'll be $10,500 plus 25% local match, and the local match is included in the budget. Item G is a request from the Sheriff's Department for approval of a resolution regarding the badge and sidearm of Deputy Wayne Mills that has retired, and this would permit the Sheriff's Department to present the badge and the sidearm to Deputy Mills. Item H is a request from the Sheriff's Department for adoption of a resolution declaring a shotgun surplus and the authorization for the county purchasing agent to dispose of the weapon through a private sale to retiree Ronald N. Wyatt. Item I is a request from Animal Services and Control for revisions to the fees and fines schedule. The additional fee for spayed pregnant cats is $80, pre-spregnant dogs is for, over 80 pounds is $100, neutered dog over 80 pounds, $98 plus $20 fee for supplemental pain medications. Item J is not considered under consent agenda at this time. Item K is request for call of a public hearing on Tuesday, October the 21st, 2008, in regards to a supplemental installment financing agreement, amending and supplementing an installment financing agreement entered into finance and refinance school, to finance and refinance school facilities. And then the last item under consent agenda is approval of the September 16, 2008 minutes. The, I think that was all on consent.
You heard of consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any questions? All in favor of consent agenda, please say aye.
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 In just a moment, Commissioner Robertson is going to be reading a statement of support for the Guard and Reserve. Prior to that, just for your information, I think statistics that, that you need to know is that presently there are 1.3 million men and women in the National Guard and Reserve in, in this country. This figure represents 50% of our total military forces in the Guard. That, that was an amazing statistic to me, and over 700,000 of these citizens have been mobilized since 9/11. And of course, when you watch the, the news every evening, you see examples of the work that they're doing. The other thing that is, was also, I found interesting, was that in the, in the Guard and the Reserve, there are many skills that are not present in the regular army. So, when those skills are needed, the Guard is called up or the Reserve is called up. And for that reason, the, this resolution is to give recognition and, and the, recognize the role of the employer, and that speaks to us as well as to the, the other employers in the county. And Commissioner Robertson?
Okay. You know, when you'd said that there were some, some portions of the Reserve components that are not in the active forces, just recently, the National Guard unit in Mooresville returned, and that's a well-drilling unit, and there are none in the active forces. They only occur in the Reserve component, so, you know, a little bit of what you said occurred right here in Iredale County. The, the statement of support for the Guard and Reserve, it reads as follows. "We recognize the National Guard and Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of our communities. In the highest American tradition, the patriotic men and women of the Guard and Reserve serve voluntarily in an honorable and vital profession. They train to respond to their community and their country in time of need. They deserve the support of every segment of our society. If these volunteer forces are to continue to serve our nation, increased public understanding is required of the essential role of the Guard and Reserve in preserving our national security. Therefore, we join other employers in pledging that we fully recognize, honor, and enforce the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act, known as U.S.A.R.A. Our managers and supervisors will have the tools they need to effectively manage those employees who serve in the Guard and Reserve, and we will continually recognize and support our country's service members and their families in peace, in crisis, and in war." Now, it will be signed by the Iredale County Board of Commissioners.
Would you like to make a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I make the motion that we, that we accept the statement of support for the Guard and Reserve.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions regarding the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Mr. Mashman, thank you. Announcement of vacancies appearing on boards and commissions. Junior Crime Prevention Council, one announcement. Troutman Planning and Zoning Board, ETJ, one announcement. Appointments to boards and commissions. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, four appointments.
Move to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Safety Planning Board, ETJ, one appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 National Home Advisory Committee, four appointments.
Motion to table.
Motion to table. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 As have it. Criminal Justice Partnership Program Committee, one appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Recreation Advisory Board, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table it. I've still have not been able to get it.
Okay. Motion to table. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Locally Emergency Planning Committee, three announcements.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate David Bullens, State Fire Department, Daniel Carrick, Davis Regional Medical Center, Samantha Midget, additional Red Cross representative.
Thank you, Ms. Sides. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Unfinished business?
Mr. Chair, I requested that this, this be put on in order for me to get a little bit of guidance from the Commissioners on the next procedures to follow relative to recruiting for a new county manager. We, with about four more months to go, there are things that we need to put in place at this time if that process is to be completed by February the first. I think the timing is good. Even though there's been no official announcement of the vacancy by the board, I'm sure that it's pretty well-known throughout the state of North Carolina anyway that there is a vacancy or will be a vacancy. And so, I think there are some things that we need to get started. One of the things, and I refer back to the recruitment guidelines that was presented to you a few weeks ago, and one of the things that it talked about doing is that, that the board, as you begin this process, it recommends that you obtain a status report of the local government's activities and projects, that, that you be thoroughly familiar with that as well, and, and I think the timing is good because this is usually the, the time of the year that we start looking at having a mini retreat. You know, a few years ago, we started having, instead of just the one, that we started having them on kind of a quarterly basis, and what, what I have here is a draft agenda. I did send an email to all of you concerning this, possibly having a mini retreat prior to the next county Commissioners' meeting. That would be on October the 21st, 21st, and I'm suggesting that we start maybe at 12:30 with just light lunch and then get into that, which, the basically, the purpose behind this is to, since we will have completed the first quarter of this fiscal year, we will have some information that we can provide and gauge how the economy is affecting up, at least up until that point. Now, obviously, we're not going to be able to give you sales tax figures up to that date because I believe Ms. Blumstein said, really, by that time, we will only have one month's sales tax figures by that time, but, but there will be other indicators that we will have that would, that could show the activity that is taking place in the county right now and use some of that for projections. I have also put down here an agricultural update because obviously, the economic impact of the agricultural community is extremely important to, to this county. Wasn't sure how far you would get on the countywide farmland protection plan tonight, and you went beyond what I anticipated, so we could probably remove that. I thought there may be a need for some discussion on that. But then also intend to have someone here from the GSDC and from Mooresville South Iredale EDC, if you approve of this, of this plan, to talk about the, I, I don't know any two people that should have a better, better handle on what's going on in the county as far as economic development than those two agencies, and so ask them to come and give a, an update there. There are a couple of personnel matters that we really need to start taking a close look at. Some of these we've discussed before, leave sharing, changes to sick leave policy, changes to the drug testing policy and vehicle policy. And then last is the presentation and discussion of a facility study that Mr. Smith and the planning staff has done a tremendous job in reviewing and interviewing all of the department heads in the county and putting together, and it's not just a wish list. I think there's some realistic approaches to what is anticipated, to what's going to be needed, and as I told Mr. Smith when he presented it to me, if, you know, if I were a new county manager coming into the county and somebody handed me that... manager coming into the county and somebody handed me that, I would, I would really feel that, that I was very fortunate to have such a document that, that would give me an idea and it would also, I think, give the Commissioners a, a great idea of what we're faced with as far as facility needs in the, in the near future. And then also would include some projections and directions, and that is getting some directions from, from you. Because as we look at the budget issues, and Ms. Blumstein is gathering a lot of data that's not really presented here, but it will be presented as part of this overall discussion. And, you know, there may be some decisions you need to make concerning the current year's budget before we go too much further in, in this year. Because if, if we're gonna have to make some changes, it's better to make those earlier than to put it all off to the end, and then we don't have as many options left at the end as we do if we, if we start looking at that now. So I'm saying this, I'm really presenting two things. One is if you concur with this, the mini-retreat and the draft budget, and if there are other things you wanna see put on there, obviously it's your, your retreat. This is just a suggested agenda. So I'd like to, to see if you would, if you approve of that. The other thing I'd like to see if you approve of is the suggested recruitment schedule. And just to refresh your memories on that, the recommendation was that you advertise by, beginning by October the 12th, that you would close the applications on November the 14th, that you would review the applications between November the 15th and the 30th of November, that you would conduct interviews the first part of December, and that the latter part of December is when you would negotiate with the top candidate or candidates for the position. And then hopefully you would have your final selection by December the 30th with the new manager being sworn in and taken office by about February the 1st. So if that is a schedule that you approve, I would, I would like for your confirmation of that as well. And if, I, I won't take the time tonight because I think actually the, the 21st would maybe be a little bit better setting for some general discussion of some different items that are addressed in this recruitment procedure. And none of them, I mean, we can delay discussion of those until the 21st. So the main things I need tonight is whether or not you would concur with this draft agenda or with the mini-retreat going ahead on October the 21st with that, so we can make the final plans for that. And then secondly, if you concur with the suggested recruitment schedule so that we can begin that process as well.
Okay. Well, it's the board's pleasure.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, that's fine. Plans.
You, you don't necessarily need a motion on that?
No. I think Mr. Johnson's got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I was just talking, well, the question I had was, is towards the advertising for the vacancy. Have we made a decision actually who we're gonna advertise with?
Well, I did put in the back, and I really don't know that you need to do much beyond this, NACO is, will give it national exposure, as well as ICMA will give it national exposure. And I think those are two that we should go with. And then on the state level is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and that basically will cover, you know, every county in, in the state of North Carolina, and will actually go outside the county. And then I do think that we only hit a couple of regional newspapers, such as the Charlotte Observer, the Raleigh News &amp; Observer, and then maybe one down east. I had not intended, unless y'all want, that we would do any advertising in newspapers outside the state. The national coverage will be those organizations that we're members of.
One suggestion I had as far as advertising, I think it, honestly, it's well-read around the state by people I talk to. I think we ought to consider running an ad in the, that John Locke Foundation newspaper. A lot of people read that thing about state and what's going on in the state.
I'm not as familiar as that as maybe I should be.
It's a good publication. A lot of people read it.
The Journal.
Right.
They send me two copies every month.
Right. They have, what is it, the North Carolina Journal that they put out by the John Locke Foundation? I think we ought to advertise in it.
Well, if that's the desire of the board, we certainly will add that to it. Okay?
That should give us enough coverage with the ones you have mentioned.
Right. So we will, we will proceed then with, with that. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any new business?
County Manager's Report? Nothing. At this time, we've got several committees that are working on different things that will be coming to you, projects and so forth, that'll be coming to you during the, the mini-retreat, but nothing else tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. No, no closed session tonight?
No closed session.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.